Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the May 23 Lebanon City Council Meeting. Our first order of business will be the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to the roll call members. Matt Kukoc, roll please.
Mike Kincaid.
President.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Weed.
Absent.
And Sierra Messenger.
President.
Thank you.
Okay, we have two sets of minutes from previous meetings to approve. The first one is for April 25th, and then also the second one's for May 9th. Are there any changes to either of those minutes? Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Motion and a second. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Minutes are approved. All right, on to old business. The first item up is ordinance 2022-14 Trash and Recycling Services Billing Ordinance. After further review of this ordinance, we found that we need to issue a public notice of a hearing on it, so this will actually be more appropriate for our next meeting, so I would like a motion to table ordinance 2022-14 at this time, so we can take that up at our next meeting.
Is that because there's a fee?
That's correct, yes. Yep, that was an oversight on my part that we didn't get that.
Oh, that's all right.
Yep, so.
I make a motion, we table the ordinance 2022-14.
Second.
To next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? Okay, that ordinance is now tabled. Next up will be ordinance 2022-15. This is the repeal of ordinance 2017-03. This is the availability fee waiver request process. We talked about before at the request of council. So, at this time, are there... Kevin, is there anything you need to say on this one? Or, your name's on it, I don't know, not sure why, but...
I'm not sure why my name is on it.
Fair enough.
I have that copy case there.
Yeah, fair enough, all right. And if you wanted to say any words on that. So, Rob, can you read the ordinance on second reading for me, please, and then we'll have discussion.
Mayor, council, thank you. Ordinance 2022-15 repeals ordinance 2017-03. This council has authority to enact, amend, and repeal ordinances that it has duly adopted. The council had previously adopted ordinance 2017-03 concerning waiver of tapping fees for multifamily and single-family areas within the city. Whereas it's become necessary and prudent to repeal ordinances that have been duly and properly enacted for the benefit of the citizens, therefore, these recitals are incorporated by reference. Lebanon ordinance 2017-03 is hereby repealed and of no effect in any and all action taken in adoption of ordinance 2022-15, and its repeal are hereby ratified.
Thank you, Rob. Any discussion, comments from council?
Sure.
Any public comment at this time? Okay, would entertain a motion then concerning ordinance 2022-15.
I'll make a motion, we approve ordinance 2022-15.
We have a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed? That is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Okay, new business then. First item up is ordinance 2022-16. This is approving lease and lit pledge for the Fieldhouse Project Hickory Junction, and this ordinance on first reading. Ben, you want to present?
I will give you a quick overview of this here, and hopefully we'll be able to answer any questions you have. I will point out before we start that because of the process and the timing and the schedule we're on right now to get these bonds closed by the beginning of June, we would respectfully ask you to consider suspending the rules tonight and moving on to second reading and adopting it tonight. Reason being is the Fed right now is scheduling likely another rate increase at the end of June and another one at the end of July. So, we have the rate increase in June built into our financial analysis for this project, but we do not have the one in July built into our analysis. So, if we don't pass this tonight, and we're moving into June before we get these items addressed, we're going to be bumping up against that July potential additional rate increase, and that really throws our numbers into a spin if we get another rate increase in there. So, that's something we will do tonight if possible. So, this first, there are two of them, two ordinances on here tonight. This first one is the lease and lit pledge associated with the construction of the actual Fieldhouse building itself. This is up to a $35 million bond. Net proceeds are about $24 million associated with that. So, this is the bond structure for the Fieldhouse itself, and this is backed by a pledge of lit local income tax. We do not actually intend to use lit to pay back the bonds on this facility, but we do need a guaranteed revenue stream in order to sell the bond. So, we have only a handful of options available to us in terms of a guaranteed revenue stream for that, and it was decided that lit made the most sense in this structure to do that. So, that is what we have designed as the repayment stream. We do anticipate that TIF increment associated with the development of the project will be able to make that repayment based on the development schedules being proposed for that project, and lit will not be needed in order to repay the bond. In terms of the actual lease rental itself, this is a very similar structure we've done in the past. A portion of the downtown project was done as a lease rental structure, and as well as the Gateway Marketplace, bonds were done as a lease rental structure. You essentially lease either the infrastructure that's part of the development or some adjacent or serving roadway, and there's a series of steps where you lease that project. But this is a structure that allows you to, that many communities use, that allows you to avoid your debt limit on bonds, so it allows you to do some additional projects you might not always be able to do based on your debt limit. So, this is a structure that's used by about every community in the state to be able to do projects like this. So, that's a real quick rundown. Rob might be able to go on some of the additional details associated with this actual ordinance itself, but this is essentially approving the structure of the bond and the repayment source, and then we have a number of additional steps to go through with the Building Corp., the EDC, and the RDC before we get this fully approved, and we will actually sell bonds in June.
So, I want to have Rob hit the highlights. As you saw, it's a fairly lengthy ordinance, so I'll have him hit the highlights, and then we can open it then for discussion as well, too. So, go ahead, Rob.
Thank you, mayor, council. Ordinance 2022-16 again concerns the ordinance of this council approving a lease between the City of Lebanon Building Corporation and the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission that pledges certain local income tax revenue to the payment of lease rentals on such lease. And this one again has been indicated, this is for the Fieldhouse Project. Whereas the Lebanon Building Corporation was incorporated as an Indiana nonprofit corporation pursuant to Indiana Code for, among other things, financing buildings and other capital improvements within the city and assisting the city with redevelopment and economic development projects. Whereas to foster continued economic development in the city, the Redevelopment Commission, the Building Corporation, and the city desire to provide for the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of approximately 190,000 square foot indoor sports complex that features eight basketball volleyball courts, two fields to support football, soccer, rugby, lacrosse, baseball, softball, as well as other ancillary uses such as conventions and wholesales, and that's all defined as the Fieldhouse Project. And that's together with public infrastructure improvements consisting of roads, a lift station, water mains, drainage, and related improvements that's defined as the public infrastructure project. And this is all being done by Card Associates Athletic Facilities LLC, the developer, to be generally located at the southeast corner of I-65 and State Road 39. The developer has requested certain incentives for the Fieldhouse Project, including the issuance of economic development lease rental bonds. In connection therewith, this council will consider the issuance of the taxable economic development lease rental bonds in one or more series in an amount not to exceed $35 million to finance through the loan of the proceeds thereof to the Building Corporation. Whereas the payment of the debt service on the Fieldhouse Project bonds will be provided by lease rental payments under a lease between the Building Corporation as the lessor and the Redevelopment Commission as the less C, and substantially the form is Exhibit A that you've been provided. Pursuant to which, again, the Building Corporation will lease certain roads located within the city to the Redevelopment Commission. The Redevelopment Commission preliminary approved a proposed formal lease on May 9th, 2022, and the date of the public hearing on the proposed lease has been set for next week, May 31st, 2022, which the Redevelopment Commission will determine whether or not the lease rentals provided under the lease to be paid by the Building Corporation are fair and reasonable, whether service to be provided throughout the term of the lease will serve the public purpose of the city and is in the best interests of its residents, and whether execution of the lease is necessary and wise, and if so, it will authorize the execution of the lease. Whereas the Boone County Income Tax Council has imposed a county option income tax pursuant to Indiana Code on the adjusted gross income of Boone County taxpayers, which has now been codified as Indiana Code 6-3.6, and that's considered the lit statute, and it's reclassified as certified shares component of additional revenue derived from the expenditure rate tax under the lit statute. Pursuant to Indiana Code, revenue derived from the imposition of lit shall be distributed monthly to the county, and upon receipt by the county shall be distributed to appropriate entities in accordance with the lit statute. Pursuant to Indiana Code Title 36714, the city council is authorized to pledge its monthly distribution of lit received by the county to pay bonds issued under that same statute or to pay lease rental payments on leases entered under Indiana Code. The city issued the Lebanon Building Corporation lease rental revenue bonds Series 2013 dated August 13, 2013, which has currently outstanding in the aggregate principal amount $905,000 payable from lease rentals secured by a pledge of lit. The lease provides the rentals payable thereunder will be payable solely from lit revenues, and the lease may pay these lease rentals from any other revenues legally available to the commission as described in the lease. Whereas this council now desires to pledge the lit revenues to the lease rental payments due under the lease on a parity with the prior lit obligation that's described above. Pursuant to the prior lit obligation, permit the issuance of additional obligations payable from the pledge of lit revenue. The city, based on the advice of its financial advisor, has determined that such conditions will be met upon the issuance of the bonds, and the lease can therefore be issued on a parity with the prior lit obligation. Whereas this council has determined it will be a public utility in benefit to pledge the lit revenue, to pledge or to secure payment of the lease on a parity with the prior lit obligation. Pursuant to Indiana Code, any lease approved by the commission must also be approved by this city council. Therefore, and I'm going to highlight these sections, this council finds that indetermines the Fieldhouse Project to be financed through the lease will be a public utility in benefit promoting economic development opportunities within the city. Approval of the lease is in Section 2, and this again is attached as Exhibit A, that such lease rentals due thereunder are in amounts sufficient to pay the debt service on the Fieldhouse bonds. The maximum term of the lease shall be 26 years. The maximum annual lease payment during the term of the lease will be $3,700,000. The maximum interest rate will be 7.5% per annum, and the Fieldhouse bonds may be subject to mandatory sinking fund redemption and subject to optional redemptions no sooner than five years after dated the issuance. Section 3 discusses the pledge of lit revenues, again, what we talked about in the recitals pursuant to Indiana Code. The city hereby pledges lit revenues to the payment of the lease on a parity with the prior lit obligation. Section 4 discusses the issues of the parity obligations, and that is set forth in subsections A, B, C, D, and E. Section 5 discusses the transfer of the roads. The city hereby approves the transfer of its interests in the roads to the Building Corporation. The mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized to take any and all actions to execute and deliver any contract agreement certificate, instrument, or other document, including a quick claim deed, and to take any actions as such person determines necessary upon the advice of council to accomplish the transfer of the roads to the Building Corporation. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and execution by the mayor. I just also wanted to add that we circulated late this afternoon one change to the lease agreement that you may or may not have been able to see, but that's on page 6, and this was a comment from Baird's Legal Counsel that really just addresses, it's just that the lease rental payable is required for any reason to be abated, and this gets into a situation if there was be a problem within the city, and it addresses, as opposed to using best efforts, that the city would permit other obligations to be transferred. Again, I know Councilman Robertson had a few other questions earlier that hopefully we addressed, but if anybody else has any questions, I'm happy to address if I can.
I don't.
Again, I know this is a lot of words in there, but essentially this is what allows us to fund the construction of the Fieldhouse, right? So, if you believe that the Fieldhouse is the right type of project for the future of our city and the site, this is essentially the process we need to go through to make that a reality, so.
But it guarantees the funding of the...
Correct, yes, it does. Yes, correct. Yeah, without this...
Guarantee the city's not funding it, whereas guarantee the funding.
We serve as the backstop, right? And the revenue that it creates itself is what is, actually what will pay the bond back. Again, kind of back to Ben's point, we're not, we're pledging the lit, right? But we have absolutely, based on working with Baker Tilly and structuring all this, we don't actually plan to actually use the lit as the source, right? But when the bond market looks at creditworthiness and rating the bond, seeing our local income tax pledge to it is a strong indicator to them. So, that's kind of what makes it a more stable bond. So, but as Rob mentioned, you know, it's any legally allowable source, right? So, that's where the TIF funding comes in. That's where the food and beverage tax we've talked about, the new created by that area, as well as the, hopefully the innkeeper's tax as well from the CVB will come in as well, too. So, that's kind of where all those kind of funding sources will go into that bigger to make that payment on that, so. Any other questions or concerns from council?
No, sir.
Would, is council willing to suspend the rules and move this to second reading tonight? Again, that's one of those things we're trying to hit, beat that second meeting of the Fed to increase the interest rates. We've already had to kind of reconfigure everything, make sure it still works with this upcoming increase, but we're trying to avoid a second one, too. So, is that, we are on a fairly short timeline here.
I'm okay with it.
Unanimous consent from council? Okay, would I need a motion then to suspend the rules?
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules on ordinance 2022-15 and go to second reading.
Okay, we have a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2022-16. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those here say aye, and it does have to be unanimous.
Aye.
Okay, it is unanimous. The rules are now suspended, and we'll move ordinance 2022-16 to second reading. I won't have Rob read it again since we have pretty good memories.
I won't even read it all the way through.
Any further discussions or comments from council at this time?
No, sir.
Any public comment at this time? Okay, I would then entertain a motion to approve ordinance 2022-16, approving lease and lit pledge for the Fieldhouse Project, which is now on second reading.
Make motion, we approve ordinance 2022-16.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John for discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ordinance 2022-16 is approved. Okay, thank you, council. Next up will be ordinance 2022-17. This is the approving lease for the public infrastructure portion. Ben?
Very similar structure to what we just discussed. This bond will be for the construction of the public infrastructure associated with the Fieldhouse development. The major components of that would be the lift station. It's about a 6,000 EDU lift station that will serve this area and also the area around it, which we expect to be very popular once this project starts moving forward. That's one major component. The extension of the water into the area would be a second component, some off-site drainage work to get down to the regulated drain crossing further to the south. And then the primary and the major component would be the construction of the roads, including the extension of Enterprise Drive from State Road 39 East to the property line, and then also several of the internal public roads would be part of this development. Total cost there is still, we're still working that out, but we do know that it's more than enough to cover what would be about $10.5 million in net proceeds coming from this bond that we're discussing here now. Again, this is a lease rental bond, same structure we talked about before. The guaranteed repayment source, though, is different. Lit was used for the last one. This one is actually a special benefits tax, which, again, we do not intend to actually apply a special benefits tax to the city to repay the bonds associated with this. We have identified repayment sources, as the mayor discussed a moment ago, including TIF, innkeeper's tax, food and beverage tax. There are actually a couple other developments in this area, industrial developments that will benefit from the road infrastructure, so we're actually going to include those in the TIF as well and the increment associated with those developments. So, we have identified repayment source and able to repay this so that the special benefits tax would not be necessary. Of course, as we discussed on the last one, you need a guaranteed repayment source in order to be able to sell the bond like this, so that's why this is using, pledging a special benefits tax to do that, although, again, we have other repayment sources. So, that's the quick and dirty of this one. Again, a very similar structure, lease rental structure, just with a different guaranteed repayment source.
Any questions for Ben on this from the council?
No, sir.
Okay, Rob, can you...
Did we get approval for the hotel convention tax?
So, we were supposed to have a meeting last week. Unfortunately, there currently are three vacancies on the CVB from other municipalities, and so there were two people that were vacant, so we didn't have a quorum for the meeting. So, I've been working to try to get that meeting, our, since our May meeting happened before the end of this month, that we plan to go before them. We had, we're all ready to go and present to them, and we didn't have a quorum to have...
They've already approved a similar type thing for Whitestown, correct?
Correct.
The project that Whitestown's got.
And essentially, that was kind of the comment I made. I do serve, or upset the city on the CVB. That was the comment I made to them, it says, hey, you know, we're kind of opening Pandora's Box here, right? So, if we're going to approve it for one municipality, I hope we'll then treat it the same if another one has. So, and I think we've been able to show this will have a significant value to all of Boone County, and we're going to, we're working with them on the language that'll specify it's only for this site, cap the number of hotel rooms, cap the number of maximum take, right? But, you know, a site like this will actually probably throw off more hotels than what is actually on the site, so the CVB will benefit and the ancillary benefit, similar in the way, you know, we will too as well. So, that answers your question. We haven't got final verdict in the CVB, but signs are favorable, and again, we plan to hopefully get it done in the month is the goal. So, any other questions?
No, sir.
I just have a, just a quick question to make sure that everybody understands, and I'm trying to understand. So, when we look at the lease agreement in a minute, it says relating to a public infrastructure project, and as Ben was pointing out, it's not just the Fieldhouse, but it's a lot of things around there. Is that correct? That's why it's generic.
Yeah, so the previous ordinance was for the building itself.
Right.
This one is for the stuff, this one is for the infrastructure. But this, but the fact that we're doing this infrastructure will allow a lot of other things to develop around it as well.
Okay, just kind of wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, so if you look at our financial analysis, which we'll actually discuss at the work session a little bit on Thursday, it's about 12 pages long, and it reviews all the different revenue sources and costs associated with it, and we'll go through that in further detail on Thursday, so you can walk through that as well.
Good. Okay. Any comments or questions?
No, sir.
I'll have Rob read it then.
Thank you, mayor, council. Ordinance 2022-17 concerns the approval of a lease between the City of Lebanon Building Corporation and the Lebanon Redevelopment Commission relating to the public infrastructure piece of the project. Whereas, again, the Lebanon Building Corporation was incorporated as an Indiana nonprofit corporation pursuant to Indiana Code for the purpose, among other things, to finance buildings and other capital improvements in the city and assist the city with the redevelopment and economic development projects. Whereas to foster the continued economic development in the city, the Redevelopment Commission and the Building Corporation in the city desire to provide, again, this is for the acquisition, construction, installation, and equipping of 190,000 square foot indoor sports complex, which has the eight basketball volleyball courts, everything that we discussed a little bit ago, but that's all defined as the Fieldhouse Project. And together, as Ben indicated, with the public infrastructure improvements that consist of the roads, a lift station, water mains, drainage, and related improvements, this is the public infrastructure part, project by Card Associates Athletic Facilities LLC, the developer, which properties generally located at the southeast corner of I-65 and State Road 39. The developer, again, has requested certain incentives for the public infrastructure piece of the project, which includes the issuance of economic development lease rental revenue bonds. In connection therewith, this council will consider the issuance of the economic development lease rental bonds for the public infrastructure project in one or more series in an aggregate amount not to exceed $16 million, and this is financed through the loan of proceeds to the Building Corporation. Whereas the payment of debt service on the proposed public infrastructure bonds will be provided by lease rental payments under a lease between the Building Corporation as the lessor and the Redevelopment Commission as the less C, in the form which is substantially the form is Exhibit A and incorporated by reference the lease pursuant to which the lease, the Building Corporation will lease certain roads located in the city to the Redevelopment Commission. Again, the Redevelopment Commission preliminary approved the form of the lease on May 9th, 2022, and the date of the public hearing on the proposed lease has been set for next week, May 31st, 2022, which, again, the Redevelopment Commission will determine whether or not the lease rentals provided under the lease to be paid to the Building Corporation are fair and reasonable rentals, whether the service to be provided throughout the term of the lease will serve the public purpose of the city and is in the best interests of its residents, and whether the execution of the lease is necessary and wise, and if so, will authorize execution of lease. The lease provides that the rentals payable thereunder will be payable from a special benefits tax levied and collected on all taxable property in the Lebanon Redevelopment District. Provided, however, the Redevelopment Commission reasonably expects to pay the lease rentals from any and other revenues legally available to the commission as described in the lease. Therefore, this council finds and determines that the public infrastructure project to be financed through the lease will be a public utility in benefit promoting economic development opportunities within the city. It approves the lease that's attached as Exhibit A with such lease rentals due thereunder in an amount sufficient to pay debt service for the public infrastructure bonds in the following condition. The maximum term of the lease shall be 26 years. The maximum annual lease payments during the term of the lease shall be $1,700,000. The maximum rate of interest on the public infrastructure bonds shall not exceed 6.5% per annum. The proceeds of the public infrastructure bonds will be used to fund the construction of the public infrastructure project, capitalize interest if any, and to fund a debt service reserve funded from proceeds of the bonds or a debt service reserve surety if necessary. The city hereby approves of the transfer of its interests in the roads to the Building Corporation. Again, the mayor and the clerk treasurer are authorized to take any and all actions to execute and deliver any contract agreement, certificate, instrument, or other document, including a quick claim deed, and to take any action as such person determines necessary or appropriate upon the advice of council to accomplish the transfer of the... or appropriate upon the advice of council to accomplish the transfer of the roads to the Building Corporation. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage and execution by the mayor.
Thank you, Rob. Now that ordinance has been read, are there any further questions or comments from council? Any public comment at this time? Okay, similarly, we would like to move these forward to second reading, so I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2022-17.
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules and have a second reading on ordinance 2022-16.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mike, and this does need to be unanimous as well. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, rules are currently suspended, and we'll move ordinance 2022-17 to second reading. Any further discussions, comments? We all love the Fieldhouse idea, I think it's great. Okay, good. All right, then, I would entertain a motion then concerning ordinance 2022-17. We have a motion to approve ordinance 2022-17 on second reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. That ordinance is approved. Thank you, council. I know there's been a lot of work gone into that, and I think tonight will be a historic moment, and I think there'd be a lot of great things coming from that project, so I appreciate your trust in us, and I think you're, I appreciate your investment in the future of our community. All right, that concludes what I have for new business. Is there anything from council?
No, sir.
Any general announcements or discussion from anybody? Okay, we'll move on to claims then, and we're going to entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
Make a motion to pay the claims, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Claims are approved. Would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Second from John. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, we are adjourned. Our next city council meeting is Monday, June 13 at 7:15 PM. Have a great night.